All right, you guys ready? All right, let's call this September ninth Essex County Board of Supervisors Work Session to Order. Uh, first thing on our agenda, what's not on there? The room looks great, welcome to our new room. April, I know you did a lot of work for this. I'm gonna have the board.
Oh.
These are for you, thank you Bobby for getting this.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
A lot of tireless thought put into this, a lot of work, so thank you and the rest of the staff for everything they've done for this.
Thank you, it's much appreciated.
Thank you. All right, first up, Kay, you've got an introduction. We do the roll call? Oh, yeah, I guess we should do a roll call. Maybe do a roll call real quick.
And I will say, this room is absolutely beautiful.
Thank you.
It really is.
You're a harsh critic, I appreciate it.
And you, I was gonna say, of all people, everybody knows, um, I'm like the fifth generation to be baptized in this church. Well, Millie's the fifth one, but anyhow, it, this, this is a special place for me. And to walk through those front doors and not see my daddy greeting everybody was a little hard, I told Lou that, but, um, it, it really is nice. Y'all did a good job.
Thank you.
Let's do a roll call real quick, Kay, so we can make it official. Sorry, that was my bad.
I was gonna say, wait a minute.
He skipped, he skipped, yeah.
I'm out of my element, I'm getting readjusted.
Thank, thank you. Chairman Akers.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gill.
Present.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor McGruder.
Here.
Supervisor Spitt.
Right.
Thank you gentlemen.
Great, Kay, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, um, so I'm excited and really happy, y'all just don't know how happy I am, to introduce my new assistant. Um, his name is Willard Thomas, but he goes by Tommy Thomas.
Yes.
He is from Gloucester, um, he's had extensive, I guess, experience and, and, what do you, what do you call it? For volleyball, he's run high school, middle school, AA, what is it?
Club.
Club, I always say AU and college coaching experience. But he also has an extensive experience in facility management, so that's, and he knows how to line a field, 'cause I tested him this week. So, is there anything you want to say to them?
Um, a little bit of my background, I do have twenty years of retail experience. That was my first job, I left that and went into the school system, um, as a facilities manager and assistant athletic director. I was both of those for eighteen years for a private school, um, so that is my background. Do you have a little bit of background in arts and rec? That was actually my first job. As a sixteen-year-old, I worked for Billy Moore for Gloucester Parks and Recreation, so I do have background in the arts section too.
That's great.
And he will learn the pool, don't worry.
Well, welcome aboard.
Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the EDA presentation for funding requests, Woody, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for allowing me to speak. Couple of things, before I jump into my request, I want to mention, when I make these requests and I go get the background data that I need to inform you, uh, so you have the big picture, I rely on your county staff, and, um, they help me. So, it's a big deal, I appreciate that, and I appreciate what these guys do. So, um, first thing, before I jump into the request, we signed, um, our agreement with TRC last week. I saw that there was an article in the paper about that, um, but that means we're taking big steps forward with Poorhouse Park. And I spoke with Kay about it earlier, um, you're gonna be getting a site plan, site assessment. Big deal is what's out there, what, how does the landfill, the former landfill play into this? So, what is the current site conditions, as well as, they'll take some input from the EDA board, and look at some possible uses, and come up with a conceptual plan. That plan, we'll revise this throughout the process, but once we have a finished plan, that's something we can use as a tool for presentations to boards such as yourself, and I can use them for grant applications, for future funding, to actually implement these plans. So I just wanted you to know, the EDA had the money in their budget for that contract, thirty-four thousand dollars, and we've executed the contract. So my, my request for you, uh, tonight, is, um, that you take the next step in the series of investments that you've made recently in your tourism plan. Um, you started out, really last fall, when you endorsed the Tourism Action Plan. Gave the EDA the money to bring me on, so let's put that plan into place, into play, and get it going. We're working on that, we've written some grants, you gave us eleven thousand dollars back in May. That was to match an eighty-four hundred dollar grant from Virginia Tourism. The extra money is our match for our second grant from Virginia Tourism, uh, for social media, so they kind of played together. What I'm asking for tonight is twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. What this will do is create an Essex, Explore Essex Tourism website. When I spoke with you guys in the past about this, one of the things that was important, was that we look for a way to locate this tourism website under the county website, on the county webpage, because it just makes sense. For example, long-term maintenance. If it lives on the county website, and the county staff, your next EDA staff, they have access to this, it's all in one place. And there's uniformity in, to some degree, in appearance. So I met with Chuck, met with a representative from Civic Plus. Civic Plus is the company that hosts your current county website. And we discussed the options, what we could do, um, maintenance, that kind of thing. And so they have a tourism model that allows you to do quite a bit of the things that we want, with itineraries, and pictures, and videos, and calendars, all that in one place. And so what this will do is establish Explore Essex, Chesapeake Gateways Community, that site. The way it'll look like and work, Chuck, can you bring up the current county website? I think you're, you're looking at that side, right, so, yeah. So, of course you have a new website in production, but essentially, when you, this, this Explore Essex site has its own URL. It is its own website, they call it a sub-site. Has its own URL, you can get there independently of going to the webs, county website, but if you go to the county website, your tourism page is there. And it'll work like a link, and so if, in this case, we're gonna look at Visit Tappahannock in Essex. This is the kind of system that we'll see, where from your county website, there's a link to Explore Essex, which then links out, of course, to all of our regional and local partners. I don't want to go too long in the presentation, I want to make sure that you have the information that you need, so I'll entertain any questions you have.
Is this, uh, is this just for the development, is there any kind of on, you know, ongoing fees associated with this?
Yes, sir, so this is for the establishment of this site. There's a three thousand four hundred dollar annual maintenance fee, that the EDA would put in, in its operating budget. And then, of course, my job would be to try to find funding for that, whether it's from Virginia Tourism, or local funding, or where, but to, to address those funding needs. But it's thirty-five hundred dollars a year.
After this first year?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-five hundred, thirty-four.
Yes.
Some change.
Yes.
So Woody, who's responsible for the content for this Explore Essex?
So the contract that we have right now with Consociate Media, that's that first eighty-four hundred dollar matching grant, so the total budget for that is sixteen thousand. They're developing the content now. It's outlined in the Marketing Leverage Plan Grant that we get through Virginia Tourism. So Virginia, so it's Consociate, Consociate Media's building content. It is the first phase of content, obviously, because a tourism website like this, it just gets better with time, we do more with it. But the initial content is being done under contract with them now, and we have that.
Do we have, um, review of the content before it gets posted?
EDA does, and of course I would share with anyone, that's, it's not, not something like that, but we are working closely with the, with Consociate on the content. Once we have what we want, then they, they call it migrating, migrate it to the website.
How's this gonna work with the Chesapeake Gateway Program?
So, I think that, I think that's really-
Is this part of the Chesapeake Gateway Program?
It, it, it comes under the umbrella, and let me expand just a little bit. So we received, um, technical assistance, uh, we are receiving technical assistance from the Gateways Marketing and Branding Team. And so what that looks like, they have national marketing, Chesapeake Gateways, at John Smith Trail. What they will do, once, once Consociate meets with the EDA board and we get things going with the development of branding, like logos, once we get past that initial conversation, which occurs next week, then the Gateways Program will meet with Consociate and myself. So that Gateways can tell Consociate, what do they offer, what do they have in their toolbox for national marketing, national branding? In our case, we're really excited about that National Park Service Arrowhead logo. Skip Weiss likes to, and he always mentions, can you imagine coming across the bridge, or coming into town, or Seventeen? And you've got that, that logo, welcome to Essex County, a Chesapeake Gateways community. So it operates with that, they fit together.
Well, uh, let's, let's, I mean, I think we don't have that logo yet, correct?
No, sir.
So we can't, we can't promise that.
No, but I will tell you that, I'm glad you asked, because the process for that, is that there's a self-nomination by, we've been invited to do that. That process begins September seventeenth. I met last week with Carl Strach and Lisa Mountcastle, who are our leaders of our local Gateways Initiative. And what we've decided to do is, we've brought in Janine Riggs from the town staff, so that Janine and I, Cooper Dickinson from Historic Downtown, and I've asked Carlos to help. It's kind of a four-person team to lead this effort, to get the nomination package, it's a forty questionnaire, forty-question package. We can draft it with town and county cooperation, because it's a town and county thing, Tappahannock Essex. And then get that process in, with, with Lisa and Carlos' leadership.
And this is also gonna dovetail with the Virginia Two-Fifty Program?
So, it will, because the Virginia Two-Fifty does offer some marketing things, and we'll take advantage, advantage of those in our tourism campaign. I'm using the logo now, if you see emails from me, under my signature, it has the Essex VA Two-Fifty. We'll do more of that, uh, as this comes online, because there are more resources available once we have the website.
They'll just, they'll take that content and put it on the site.
Yes. And part of this, what I like most about it, is that I can do things like this, and most people who can, most people who can do a little bit, a little bit of computer stuff, will be able to work, so your staff can work, but county staff will have the keys to this website, so they can do things independently of some consultant, we have the keys, I think that's important in the long term.
And can you also, with this website, uh, through Civic Plus, track the number of hits, the number of requests, the number, some way that we can track to say, yeah, we're getting our money's worth out of this website, that it's working, it's doing what we're expecting it to do?
Yes, I think the, the acronym for that is KPIs, is that correct? No, metrics? Tell me, help me out Chuck. KP, what's a KPI? Key Performance Indicator.
indicators.
But then, doesn't that tell me, key performance indicator, and that tells me about who's hitting my website?
I just want to be able to track.
Yeah, yeah, it does offer that.
All that stuff.
I want to make sure I get that terminology.
Uh, yes, the website, like with our current website, we have Google Analytics on it that give us information about the number of page hits, which, you know, things people are looking at, how much time they spend, you know, on certain things, uh, and we'll have that with the tourism site as well.
So then you can use that data to say, okay, we can put more content of this, 'cause that's what people are looking more for, or whatever, or-
Yes, we could definitely use those metrics to kind of, you know, tailor it to what we're seeing people want the most, so.
So, it's gonna be changing, it's growing, it's gonna shrink here, grow there, and all that stuff, so that's flexible.
Yes, sir.
It's not gonna be a stagnant, and that's it, okay, perfect, perfect, alright.
I think John would like to see how many people click on his profile picture and go to the website.
And print it out and throw darts at it, it's probably what they do, but, uh-
Special request, got that one.
But, uh, but Woody, last thing, this seems to be the next step in the process, and we've, we've already, um, approved eleven thousand dollars for this. If we don't take this next step, we've kind of lost our eleven thousand first investment, is what it sounds like to me, so. And, uh, possibilities of, you know, future grants to help, you know, continue to build and add to it as well. And there's no guarantee, I understand that, but through the tourism grants.
I'm really pleased, yes, sir, that's true, I mean, there's a lot of ways to get a website. We were directed that the best way to do this was to make it dovetail with the county website.
Right.
How do we do that? And that's what the research that Chuck has helped me through.
And this is coming cheaper than what we initially discussed?
It's about the same, you know, at one point, there was a ballpark number that I was throwing around, that Consociate said, we'll build you a website for ten thousand. This is twelve-two-sixty-nine. I, I, full disclosure, this is this creation of this website, so the numbers are close. But there will be, I will come back to you probably in November, maybe December, and, and need some money, maybe not this much, it's a twelve thousand, but there will be a payment to get to, um, pay Consociate to migrate that data. Our contract is based on a grant from Virginia Tourism. It's very specific deliverables, the deliverables are build the content. Phase two of that contract will be put it somewhere. They were gonna build it, and we hadn't crossed that bridge, so we didn't sign that part of the contract. Now we're gonna, hopefully we'll have our place, so we'll have to negotiate with them of, of a fee to put it on, which we knew was coming. That was a phase two down the road anyway, but I just don't, I don't want to make you think we're done. There is a, there's a small part, we gotta put it in place.
Do you have a budget for all these phases going forward?
So, yes, the, the EDA, we have a marketing budget, it's based on the grants, and at this point, three thousand four hundred dollars is what we have left in our budget. That's taken from the eighty-four, the eleven thousand dollars that you guys gave us, we pulled out eighty-four, we pulled out twelve fifty. We had some money in our operating budget from the allocation you made for FY twenty-six. So, I don't have a cost on what it will take for the migration of the content.
It'd be helpful if we could, at some point, if you can provide a budget to show the total amount and the different phases that we're spending in a timeline on doing that. Uh, do you have a scope of, I mean, for this twelve thousand two-sixty-nine, maybe I've missed it in the packet, but do you have a detailed scope of work, what that twelve thousand covers, as far as what they're doing with that money?
I do, we can pull it up, um, but essentially, it, it was, uh, it's the establishment of that site.
I understand, I'd just like to see the detail, I'm a financial guy, I'd like to see the detail.
I could share that with you, and, and Chuck might be able to pull it up, it was in our package from Hannah, with the three price, three pricing. Yeah, I've got it.
And my last question, when would we, when could we see a demo of this site?
So, we-
I know you gotta pay to play.
Yeah, the, um, got information back from Civic Plus this week, full buildup. Six to eight months, but in three months, from whenever we execute the deal, if we get them to do this, within three months, we can start migrating content to it. So I think that, does that answer your question, Ronnie?
Yes, thank you.
In, in about three months, Consociate will have the things that, 'cause they'll be here for the next couple of months, taking pictures and making videos, and, yeah. Then we start migrating, so we'll see something in a few months. Are you guys interested in seeing a site that they, something that they've done, a tourism site they've done in the past for Franklin County? We kind of, I like that one, it's a good example. Want to see what it looks like?
Consociate Media did the tourism site that was for Tappahannock, it was a joint venture through Essex County. That cost at the time was forty thousand, um, with a similar timeline. So, development, a logo, onboarding, and deployment.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you know what Franklin County paid for this?
I've got a feeling I know where some of that money might have come from, but, uh, um, no, uh, I don't know. I know that we, we started out with, um-
Moonshine, okay.
That was, that was my moonshine joke, guys, Franklin County, that wasn't my moonshine joke. But yes, uh, we started out with an idea that we would work with forty thousand, that was the ask that I made to Virginia Tourism. We did not get a twenty thousand dollar grant, we got an eighty-four hundred dollar grant, so we cut our budget in half and got, and bought half of the implementation. That did not include website development, that's why I'm here.
So, I know you talked about migrating in three months, does it make sense, or I guess I should ask, why would we migrate without having the full thing developed?
Might be a good question for Chuck, for me, I want to get Consociate started, I wanted to start this three months ago. They're gonna build some content, I'm ready to get it on, because we have events and things happening in the county that I want to start promoting. And so I'm anxious for them to get, for Consociate to get what's under contract, get those deliverables done, get them to us, so that we can put them on our new tourism website. I'm already starting to look at the, the next grant funding cycle from Virginia Tourism. This eighty-four hundred dollar grant that I keep mentioning, that's a marketing grant, well, it's twenty thousand dollars again next year, and I'm gonna ask for twenty thousand dollars and build a program. I come back to you guys, you know, for things like content, when we start sharing website ideas, what are we gonna put there? What's next? More videos, more, more calendars, I'm excited about itineraries. I think the itineraries will help generate revenue to your top. So we promote places that they stay in the county, and hopefully that will add to your tourism occupancy revenues.
So Woody, is this twelve-two-sixty-nine gonna get us through the, just through the building of the website?
Yes, sir, that's what it's for.
And then, three months from now, you're gonna ask for more money, what's that gonna be for?
Yeah, I don't expect, and I don't want to throw out a number, 'cause I would hate to throw you off, but it's not gonna be as big as twelve-two-sixty-nine. It's a, because Consociate, keep in mind, for twenty, they were gonna build the content, build a website, and put the stuff on the website, for twenty. So, I'm, I'm doing it in piecemeal now, because we, we, we didn't get the full grant from, from Virginia Tourism, we got eighty-four instead of twenty, so. I'm doing it in chunks, but the next phase would be to come back in, get some money to, to migrate the, the content, and then, sit tight, apply for the new round of funding from Virginia Tourism.
So what was the amount of that grant again, the, the amount of the grant we got?
For Virginia Tourism?
Yes.
So it was, so we were approved for eighty-four hundred, and then a second grant for twelve fifty. And that's what we've, that's a one-to-one matching grant, and that's what we allocated the eleven thousand for.
I know Consociate Media has done several, um, websites and stuff through the PDC, and Bud and I have seen them, they are really good stuff, so they've done some excellent work.
I find them good to work with, and most of all, they know our partners.
They know our partners, yeah.
They are so well thought of, throughout the region, you may have seen some recent, um, we got a lot of good press, guys, for, for Explore Essex and water, and water ecotourism in Virginia Living Magazine. Stephanie from Consociate is on, is on the team that's now doing their award ceremony for the next, they're just so well thought of. They're not building the website, Civic Plus builds the website, but they've got a template that we like.
Stephanie, just a question.
Yeah, um, I'm sitting here thinking about Alex and Chuck. This is something that would be more, be too involved, or take away from the county duties for them to get involved in, to, to set this up?
Mr. Johnson, I think it would be a lot to ask them to build a website. Once we have it, the idea is that they will be able to-
Maintain it?
Help maintain, along with me, or the, or, so your next staff, your next EDA staff, will be able to do some maintenance, some, some general things. But my opinion would be, it's a lot to build a website.
Is that a possibility, that, that, that they could and would?
Um, the actual, like, hosting of the website, though, one of the reasons that I'm encouraged that, uh, the EDA is looking at Civic Plus is, a lot of times, um, you know, people, like, with the tourism site that we had before, or that the town had, uh, basically, they had a go dat, a go daddy hosting, it's on a, um, a system called WordPress, which isn't super secure. Civic Plus builds municipal websites, they're extremely secure, they're, uh, hosted, uh, using CloudFlare, which is a very secure, um, provider. So, I would feel much more comfortable with, uh, you know, having Civic Plus do it. Um, Alex and I, you know, we can't, we, we could not create what they can, and have it hosted as securely. The other po, the plus I see is, because our county site is hosted and provided by Civic Plus, and the EDA tourism site potentially hosted and provided by Civic Plus, um, like Woody said, if we need to step in, I look at Alex and I as being kind of backup, where if there is something that, you know, they need to have posted, and nobody can do it, Alex and I could, could do that, and that would be a minimal, uh, you know, ask for us. So, with our, with the current tourism site, you know, we really didn't have any visibility into that, the, um, uh, you, as you probably know, the ma, maintenance of the tourism site changed hands at least a couple of times, and there was a lot of rigmarole in, you know, passing things back and forth, so, you know, this way, it would be kind of under the county umbrella, and we could maintain control of that, and not, you know, not have it be a problem.
I, I hear you, I hear your response. I appreciate your integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any other questions for Woody? Thank you, Woody.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, gentlemen, Bobby's gonna give us an update, um, some financial centralized services, school finances.
Good evening.
Evening.
Hello.
I wanted to, uh, provide a presentation tonight, so that, uh, you're aware of kind of what's going on with the centralized services, and-
I'm gonna get the coffee, Bobby, hearing you.
I'm sorry, like, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, let me just see if I can get this going. Okay. I wanted to talk to you all about centralized services, um, we are almost fully staffed, we have one HR position, uh, that is still open. Uh, it is posted, but, um, I'm kind of trying to wait and find just that perfect person, uh, that can step in and fill that role. So we have, uh, our financial people, our financial generalist, that is Mary Davis, that is Julie, uh, Julie Aker, Julie Aker, sorry, Julie Welch, and Missy Walker. And then we have Tatina Fontenroy, who is handling the school payroll. We have Demetrius Samuels, who is handling the HR. We have Brian Seal, uh, who is handling special projects and grants. Uh, we've got Juanita Sidner, of course, who is handling the payroll for the county. So we have a really good staff, um, the team has come together very well, I've been very pleased, a lot of the staff did not have school or local government experience, uh, but they came with some excellent backgrounds. And, uh, they are just stepping up, learning, and just doing a bang-up job, and I, I do want you to know that. Why I need to talk to you tonight is because of some of the budget issues that we are running up against. I have not closed out FY twenty-four twenty-five in RDA, um, because of trying to clean it up, also because of, uh, the deficit that we're facing. If you'll remember, the, um, school set up their twenty-four twenty-five budget on an eleven-fifty ADM. So that means that they inserted- So that means that they inserted that number into the COUT tool, which showed what eleven fifty ADM would actually bring in, in revenue. Well, the reality of the situation is, is that there was never gonna be eleven fifty ADM met. So, the revenue that was anticipated, a lot of it was, in my opinion, just a pipe dream, but that's what they set the budget off of. So, what has transpired is that when you look at what was budgeted for twenty four twenty five, and then you actually look at the actuals, it's actually looks better if you look at the actuals than if you actually look at what was projected. What we're finding is in the operational fund, that we are probably going to hit about a seven hundred, a seven hundred and twenty thousand dollar deficit. Now, what this means to the county is that the schools and the county maintain a joint bank account. So, when the school started over-expending, if they had been in a sole bank account, then, of course, they wouldn't have been able to meet payroll or anything else. Well, because y'all share a bank account, it became a due-to, due-from, basically just a standard accounting term. To the fact that when you get the twenty five annual financial report from UHY, you will see a due-to, due-from for that deficit amount. And that can change, I am hoping that when UHY shows back up again and really starts digging into the financial numbers, that they can come up with some areas that they could do adjusting entries, and maybe mitigate that amount. But, that is where we stand on the operational account. Now you do know that the school has two other funds.
And Bobby, just to be, going back to that, most of that is because of some of the penalties and things that we're facing from, um, from the DOE, VRS, IRS.
Yes.
That's, that's a large contributor behind that.
Right. Not to mince words, I'll be very honest, the payroll system is a mess, it's an absolute mess. And it's not just in the last year or two, this goes back several years. What we have been made aware of is that in the last two years. In the last two years, taxes have been pulled from the pay for, you know, the, the employees, but not forwarded on to the IRS. We have an example of, we had a two hundred and fifty two thousand dollar bill from the IRS for November and December twenty twenty fours time period, where we did not make payments to the IRS for the school payroll. And that forty five thousand dollar cost to us rose to a two hundred and fifty two thousand dollar penalty. We still haven't received the invoices for January through June of twenty twenty five. And I anticipate that I will probably find that payments were not made in a timely manner, or accurately, or whatever. So, it's not a good situation. It is getting better with the staff that we have in centralized services. They are cleaning up the payroll system, but it is going to take months to weed out all of the inaccuracies and inconsistencies. So, the penalties and interest is driving a lot of this, you also had an inordinate amount of payouts, people leaving employment with the school system over this year. You know, the school leadership, you had a payout for, to Dr. Thomas, you had a payout to Dr. Blunt, you had interim pays that, in my opinion, were just atrocious. They spent money on a lot of things like that, that we had no control over. What I have done, though, is that in the Personnel Action Forum that goes to the school board for a closed session meeting every month, that has all of the, you know, staffing impacts, I've started including in there the payouts, because that's substantial. I mean, just the one that I submitted for last night's meeting had a ten thousand dollar payout for two people. That's substantial, we don't budget for that. We will next year, but there again, it's kind of a moving target as to what that number's gonna be. So, in the operational fund, we're looking at probably a seven hundred and plus thousand dollar deficit. In the grants, which this was very disheartening, because we have been working diligently, Ms. Gross, our staff, they meet weekly, they review expenditures, they talk about doing amendments, I mean, Ms. Gross and the staff have really done an amazing job. The problem is, is that staff is paid in many areas directly from these grants. That's great, as long as you are seeking reimbursement in a timely manner, which should be monthly. But in many cases, that wasn't done, and then as well, you know, that a lot of the paperwork left when one of the people exited the school district back in January, and so, we were trying to build stuff from scratch and figure out where we stood. At the same time, we had two to four years of back awards on multiple of the grants, and so we've cleaned a lot of that up, just because we were going to be losing the funding. So, we've made a lot of progress, but, I'm sorry, but this slide just doesn't, it just doesn't reflect that. We do have still reimbursements pending with VDOE, they are very meticulous in the exact wording and way that they want reimbursement submitted. That's why I have delegated Brian Seal and Julie Lynch to specifically working with Ms. Gross, so that it's just those three. They've gone through the trainings with VDOE, they call them, they're doing much better, but there are still quite a few, I'd say at least probably about two hundred and fifty thousand, if not more, outstanding reimbursement requests to come to us. And there again, I'm hoping that when UHY shows up, that some of those can be shown as receivables, and, you know, then it will help this area of the budget not look so bad.
And I think, Bobby and I had a couple meetings in April to talk about some of these things, and I'm convinced that part of the issue that we're having with this, and we had made numerous comments to this, to the school board and the previous superintendent, was using the ESTR funds to pay for operational expenses, and not focusing on the reimbursements for the grants like we should.
Yeah.
And I think that's why we're in the position that we're in. Go for the easy money instead of the hard money.
Why, why weren't the IRS being paid like it should?
Well.
You're asking the wrong person.
They should have been paid, the payments were not sent, and you would have to talk to the previous payroll specialist and the previous director of finance as to why. That's what concerns me, that at least the first three months of the year, we could see some very serious penalties, because at least one of the individuals was still handling the payroll. But it has, the payroll has not been handled consistently by anyone since, I think, Mary Coggins. After that, I think it's gone through two to three hands, and the lady that was doing the payroll prior to Tatina was, of course, Sarah Brinson, and she abandoned the job and walked off of it on August seventh, so, it was just, it's, it's a lot. It's stressful, it's challenging, it's frustrating, and it's a lot, so.
Well, this was because of lack of knowledge, knowing the job, or funny financing?
I think it's just incompetency and lack of knowledge, and not being willing to ask questions, you know, so that you can get it right. That's what I find. I don't think it's fraudulent, I think it's just strictly incompetence.
And Bobby, we plan to bring up your meeting with the auditors as part of this presentation?
The findings? Uh, yeah, I will.
Okay.
So, the Child Nutrition Fund, this one kind of stymied me, because they have notoriously ended the year pretty much in balance. And so, looking at this, I went back and I've started pulling receipt reports and journal reports, because my only real thought on this is that maybe some revenue was allocated to another area that should have gone to this. Because Mr. Taylor is usually very, very meticulous about staying on track. And I thought for a minute that it might be that, the cap, the capital items that we came to you guys on, a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars for the equipment for the cafeterias, but that wasn't it either. So, I'm gonna be speaking with him, see if I can kind of find out maybe some mitigating information, and then go ahead and share that with you. But as it stands right now, there is a deficit in the child nutrition. So this is kind of an overview of.
Bobby, can I ask a question on that real quick?
Yeah.
Is it possible that part of that is due to, if this board recall, recalls, we got the request by the schools last year for some of the equipment they were buying, I know Ronnie, your favorite was the eight hundred dollar cash register stand. Could that be part of some of this? Because at that time, we thought that there wasn't gonna be enough to cover that.
Well, the, the cafeteria department utilized about fifty seven or fifty eight thousand from the cap, their reserve fund, to purchase most of that equipment last year, just like they use the one hundred and sixty one thousand this year. But I was also noting that I did not feel like some of the federal funds came in like they should, and so I was going to look into that. Because realistically, they should have come in, but there has been so much turnover and miscommunication that, you know, something could have gotten lost in the mix. But this is one that I really want to try to track, and see if I can bring it closer to what the actual expenditures are. Like I said, this is an overview, so the overall deficit is one point four million, that includes all of the funds. And as I said, also, I do hope and anticipate that UHY, when they come at the end of the month and start going through the financial documents, that they will be able to do some adjusting entries that will improve the situation.
So Bobby, this is worst case, in your opinion?
Yes, but I think it'll, even if they were able to.
It's terrible.
Yeah, it might shave off a hundred thousand or so, but yeah, it's, it's, it's where we are. So, now let me move on to the twenty five twenty six budget. You know, as y'all are aware, we built that budget off of a very tight number, we looked at actuals, and the budget was generated off of a ten fifty ADM. Now, the state had us at a nine eighty seven ADM, school board agreed to a ten fifty, because of course, they notoriously have always budgeted for higher than what they actually have. But I thought that ten fifty was a reasonable adjustment. So, we went ahead and calculated the budget off of that, we set up the personnel that way, and as you're aware, the majority of the, the school's budget is personnel. Payroll, fringe benefits, you name it. So, with that knowledge, when school was about to get started, I started reviewing the contracts, since we have HR in our department now, and also Tatina was processing the August payroll. So I started scrubbing that and looking at who's on payroll, you know, what, what are they doing, what's their pay? And at that point, I realized that the school had overcommitted in hiring. And, so I made the superintendent aware of that. And then, Ms. Rounds and I met with him one-on-one to talk to him about, this is an issue, it has to be addressed immediately, what, what are you gonna do? We came away from that meeting with really us making recommendations, and him kind of, I think, amazed that he was in this situation. After that, we had a meeting with Mr. Croxton, Mr. Akers, Ms. Rounds, Ms. Scott, the superintendent, and myself on August twenty second. And I had hoped that that meeting would give me some actionable items to be able to move forward on. Because you do have to understand that we've been paying payroll for the school since July first. Now granted, some of the, you know, positions didn't start work until August first, but that's still, by the time anything gets settled, we'll be almost at the end of the first quarter. And we can't make that money back up. So, I did receive today an email from the superintendent with some areas that he would like me to crunch some numbers on, to see. What concerns me is that the schools are looking at probably a three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar overcommitment in personnel. But at the same time, they're still looking at probably a million dollar deficit from all of these penalties that we are anticipating, coming from the taxes, and coming from VRS, and other areas. And, so, you know, I've been trying to communicate this, and I, I know, you know, I, I know my urgency, because this has really got me concerned, is that, you know, not only did you over-hire, but you also are facing a penalty that I knew nothing about, Ms. Scott knew nothing about, when we were preparing the budget in April. It wasn't until we got that last invoice from the IRS about a month ago, that we went, wow, this is really bad. And it went back to the November, December time period. So, in my view, the school is about one point four million dollars in the hole this year already. So they have to take action. And, um, my, we've made some recommendations, the superintendent has come back with some other options, but none of it really addressed the one million that I'm fearful will actually occur, because of the tax penalties and the VRS penalties and everything else. So, that's kind of where we stand on this year. And, one of the things that I would really like to ask the board to do is to give some direction on how you want to handle the deficit from this prior year. Personally, I think that y'all should set up a, you know, repayment schedule, but y'all may decide to just wash it, and just, you know, let it go, and just start from scratch. But knowing that you already have a deficit in this year, you know, that's gonna be up to you guys. Treat it as a due-to, due-from, they do have usually about two hundred thousand that comes from local revenue, from use of facilities, miscellaneous refunds and things like that, that they get every year. You could just go ahead and dogtag that, is that's your annual payment to us until you repay us, and start the repayment process in the twenty six, twenty seven budget year. As far as the twenty five twenty six, all I can recommend is, y'all need to take immediate action. And when I say you guys, I mean you guys, because the school board is not as strong acting or decisive, and I think that they are gonna need guidance, and they're gonna need direction. And though that may not put you in a very comfortable position, I think that it is needed.
They have resisted that guidance in the past.
Yes, yes. So it's, it's been, it's a challenge, I know, and I apologize that I'm having to even present any of this. I've never in my entire thirty-plus-year career, ever, dealt with a situation like this. UHY did send out the, what they call their first draft findings, they were, I believe, seventeen items. And majority of them were things that we knew, in fact, we told them, we know this is a problem, please, you know, list it, so that we have to take care of it. Lot of it was process, a lot of it was policy updating, a lot of it dealt with procurement, and this was on both sides, the county and the school. Not that the county was doing anything wrong, but now that the schools are part of the county, then it kind of all hits us, you know, one in the same. They also had some issues with payroll, they also recommended that we get off of two separate systems, and move away from either RDA or admins, and just consolidate into one, and I a hundred percent agree with that now. After the last six weeks, I, because when I initially came into this position, I was like, nope, not gonna do it, we're not gonna move off of both systems. We're not going to move off of both systems. But I will tell you this, it's a nightmare trying to maintain two separate systems when not all the parties are working together. So I think being on one system would alleviate a lot of issues.
Just to piggyback on that a little bit, I've met with UHY, I guess it was this past Friday maybe, that I had my call with UHY, went over the 17, what they call the preliminary findings, and they said there will be more and more detail that comes with it. And they did, they recognized a lot of process issues, procedural issues not being followed, payroll, time clock, systems not being used adequately. And one of the things they do, did recommend as part of that is consolidating some of these processes, a centralized procurement, like what we're doing now. I mean, it's things that we're doing now, but they're looking back at last year. And so I expect that we're going to see a lot. The good news is, a lot of these things we're putting in motion now to correct, but don't expect the audit report to be pretty.
Yeah. Yeah. And, you know, we, all of us at the school and at the county were very, very honest. And in fact, I think, even though, you know, it will be a lot of work on the county's part and the school's part, this is what we wanted from RFC. We asked them, you know, find where we're lacking. And UHY is doing that, and they're doing it with us as a partner.
Bobby, for years and years and years, heard from the school board when they did their budgets, that they cannot run a deficit.
Correct.
Okay. But apparently, that's not the case.
Not when you share a bank account with the county.
Okay, so all those years, they were telling us that.
Well, legally or statutorily, I don't believe that they can or should, but the reality is, is that it's like, you know, your teenage son having access to your bank account.
Well, here's the real problem with the statute. So what the statute says is you can't expend more than you're appropriated to expend. This is a case where that's not necessarily the case. They didn't expend more than they're appropriated, they don't have the revenues to support-
What they expended.
-what was budgeted and then what we appropriated. So that's, that's where the rub is there a little bit.
And you can't budget for penalties and things of that nature, so there's so much of this too.
With what we've implemented so far, going forward, we don't anticipate these monumental problems.
No, I don't not, because we are, we are still having some issues gaining access, because so many people have touched so many facets of the payroll system that we don't even have a direct line to the IRS. But what we are doing instead is, while we're working to trying to gain that access, we're sending them checks, overnighting them. And we're doing that to many of the agencies that we pay for fringe benefits. That way, I guess, you know, paper checks is one thing, but they still accept them and it keeps us from getting additional penalties.
So what we, as a board, we have two issues, basically. One is the 1.4 million dollar fiscal '24-'25 year deficit. And then we have another 1.4 million roughly, expected '25-'26 issue.
Is it 1.4 or 1 million? Did I hear you say 1 million for '25-'26?
'25-'26 is about a million in penalties and late payments, but then another 400,000 for the personnel overcommitment.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
So what, the second part of that is, what can we do as a board to control their spending and make up for some of this? I mean, it almost sounds like the first 1.4 for '24-'25, if we don't pay these penalties and all that, they're just going to keep on occurring and getting worse, right?
Yes, that's why, but see, those penalties, because the year will have closed, will now be being paid out of this current year's budget-
Right.
-which we don't have those funds assigned to that. So that means they either have to cut their expenditures by the 1.4 million total, or yes, the county will continue to have to step up and cover those additional costs.
I'm just saying that if the county doesn't step up, at least for the '24-'25, that 1.4 million will continue to grow as more penalties are added for late fees, interest, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct?
Well, the 1.4 for the '24-'25 is a done deal.
It's already a full, really.
It's already hit the bank account.
Okay.
So it's more of a concern for the '25-'26.
Okay.
If we can get the budget downsized enough that they can then have a balanced budget for the rest of the year, there won't be any more hopeful penalties hitting. I can vouch pretty much for August payroll, but I can't vouch for anything before that.
Does the school board know all this at this point?
Yes, the superintendent does, and I believe Ms. Scott, because she was in the meeting on the August 22nd.
So-
Do they understand it to the level that you understand it?
I have, we have had multiple conversations with Mr. Crockston, and my view is that the chair is responsible for communicating to the rest of the school board. And I do believe that they had some conversations in closed session last night, but I wasn't privy to them and I don't really want to know. But at the same time, I don't really know if they have a solid enough idea, but obviously, they should have been given information from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent.
Would I be asking too much, just like you presenting this to us? You're making it very crystal clear and just how serious it is. I understand that. And I think if you afford an opportunity to make your presentation to them from you, it's impossible for them not to understand it.
Well, I'd be willing to do that, but to be honest, I don't feel like my conversations or my communications are heard, so.
It'd probably be prudent to have another joint meeting between the two boards, I think. This is, this is critical, beyond critical.
I was wondering the same thing. Meet in two weeks, separate meeting, just to establish this issue, both boards face to face.
Especially if we have to cut expenses for this, for this fiscal year, and they need to solve during that now.
And I think the key word you just used is "they," okay?
Thank you.
This is not a county responsibility.
What the communication from the county needs to be, we owe it to our taxpayers. You know, we're responsible for their dollars. And, you know, to spend their dollars on errors and things that need to be fixed at the school board level, that really needs to happen at the, you know, at the school board.
Yes.
But if it doesn't get done, it's incumbent on us to impress that.
Well, what we need to communicate is that our citizens' dollars aren't going to be a bailout for mismanagement. And because then it gets real, to your point, John, the statute does say, any, any school board members, any leadership is, could be, I would correct it from Romax, for malfeasance of office, which can carry up to a Class 1 misdemeanor.
I'd have to look at the, I'd have to look at the penalties, but it is malfeasance in office for an overexpenditure.
And right now, what I think Bobby says, what we're tracking for this year is going to be an overexpenditure of their budget. So that statute does come into play. And that's the reality of what they need to understand and why they need to take whatever appropriate actions to address that. It's not for us to say what those are, you know, we don't operate in schools, they need to come up with those, those reasons.
Agree, but communication has to be put out there to them, if they don't understand it.
Bobby, the 1.4 from last year budget, you said that's already been absorbed into this year's budget?
It's been absorbed by the bank account. As it was expended, then it was basically paid for out of the joint bank account. So any payroll that was hitting the grants that has not been reimbursed yet, that was paid straight out of the bank account, like it was in a payroll coming out of the operational account.
Is there any possible reimbursement on, on those funds from the state?
We are still trying, resubmitting and resubmitting reimbursement requests to fit the exact wording as they like to see it and to make sure that we have all the documentation. We're making headway, but I had submitted, I think, two reimbursement requests for a couple of hundred thousand, and we still haven't been paid for that. And I probably did that two and a half, three months ago. So it's stuff that we're constantly working on with them. And my hope is that even though some of these awards may terminate like September 30th, if our requests are in there, then when they finally do approve it, it will get paid back. But it'll determine if it's going to be committed to this fiscal year, because the prior fiscal year is closed, or, you know, depending upon what the auditors want to say. And, you know, I will tell you something, one of the things that I never really could understand is how the school had money. And that, a lot of it came from the multiple-year grant awards that, in my opinion, and I may be wrong on this, but in my opinion, from historical, is that if you have funds from a prior year, you ask to have them re-appropriated, even if it's a grant. They never did that. So they had kind of a slush fund of several hundreds of thousands of dollars. You know, granted, you have to apply for the money, you have to fit it into the categories of the application that was submitted, but they don't have that anymore. We have cleaned up as much as we personally can on the back grants, but that's how they were doing it. I mean, in January, we had some grants that we had four years' worth of awards. And that's insane. Of course, VDOE doesn't allow that anymore. I think that they allow you to have two years running, and then a third that will usually, you know, expires pretty quickly. But yeah, I mean, that was how they were doing it, is they had all of these grants, but they never asked for it to be re-appropriated, they just used it to pay staff and payroll, fringe benefits.
Yeah, one of the scariest things about this, had we not, had the school not asked us to go in to do essentialized services, I don't think we would know this now. And we'd probably be mid-three-quarters way through the year before we had any, any vision of it at all. So I'm thankful for Bobby and her team, what they've done. I'm sorry for the stuff that you found, because it's prohibited you from moving forward as fast as you wanted to on a lot of these other big projects.
True.
But this is big stuff that has to be fixed. And I agree with Ronnie and John, we need to have a joint meeting sooner rather than later to get this out. I listened into the school board meeting last night, and there was a lot of comments from teachers, and rightfully so, but I think there's a lot of misinformation out there right now, so this needs to be clarified so people can understand what the issue is we're dealing with and how we're trying to work with the schools to fix it.
Well, if we meet, say, in the next two weeks roughly or whatever, are we going to just focus on what is presented today? Or are we going to start the steps of how we're going to resolve this? I'd like to be at the resolve stage sooner than better.
Yeah, both.
So I don't want to have to present this and then say, they need to think about it and get back to us and all that. I'm done. We've been, Rob, you and I have been talking about this for years, okay? All right? And now it's finally hit the pan, all right?
Well, Bobby's suggesting a repayment plan, so we have to go there, I think.
I think we-
And look at cutting expenses, see if you can do it two ways.
That's right. We need to come in with that idea, and they need to come in with that idea, not come with us like, you know, we'll, we'll take under this advisement and all that. We don't have that luxury anymore, so.
We can't deal in promises.
So with that in mind, I'm back to my suggestion that perhaps you would go to them, present the problem with the idea, they need to come back with this idea how to solve this problem. But they need to know how severe the problem is initially, before they begin to think of ways to fix the problem.
We had some very serious, stern meetings, communicating that very thing, with the last one on the 22nd of August saying, okay, it's your bailiwick, but you haven't come up with suggestions. Here's a list, it gets you down to zero. Here's the one point, I think four at that time. They didn't like the suggestion, said, we'll chew on it and send you a list, like, we need it today. This is dire. Said they would send it. And then there was more actions of hiring other people for positions not posted, not funded, but no action plan.
Yeah, today was the first day, I think, we received, Bobby received something today, was the first time since that August 22nd meeting, which I know she hasn't had time to crunch those numbers to see what impact that would be, because she's still trying to close out the prior fiscal year.
Well, she has to check some of those items, because the first item on the list, if I'm not incorrect, was AP Academy, and on the 22nd, he said that had already been disbanded. So I don't know if that's a capture of an action or we're going to do it now and we didn't. It has to be verified.
But the information that was sent, though, today to me, only addressed the overcommitment for personnel.
Right.
It didn't address the million dollars in penalties.
Right.
And the school has been made very aware of that and my concerns on that.
I know folks that are aboard that, when we were talking about the Esser Grant, for example, and what to do with the money and everything else, and we waited and waited and waited and waited, and we not, we didn't get anything, so we had to make the decision. I'm ready to go ahead and make decisions for them and say, this is what we're going to do, and then let them respond to it.
We can tell them that in a joint meeting, so.
Well, I have no problem taking Bobby and April's suggestions and, you know, from your meetings and just lay it to them.
But it's gone, it's gone three weeks and we just get a response today, that's not-
I do agree with Vice Chairman Gil and you as well, but you need to hash it out the table together to understand that there's an expectation and accountability to you. They've asked for the bailout as far as centralizing the services and to cover the losses. They need to, to know that you're holding them accountable, board to board.
We ought-
And be part of the solution.
They had to be accountable, just like we do.
Right.
So then a logical question would be, if, let's take that approach, at what time do we have a face-to-face meeting and I want them to tell us, this is what we're going to do? You know, I want to look them in the eye and say, what are you guys going to do?
Well, I think it sounded like, if I'm, unless I'm wrong, you wanted to meet, not spend a lot of time on the briefing, but, you know, down to brass tacks, you know that you need to come up with how to address this 1.4 million currently. Let's work and roll up the sleeves until we get a plan tonight before we adjourn.
Is that the way we want to approach it?
If not, you're going to hemorrhage more money.
Well, I know that, but I'm just saying, do we want them to present that to us, what they're going to do in, say, two weeks' time to meet that?
That's up to the board.
Or do we want to hash it out there, folks? It doesn't matter.
They could come with a plan or not. You still have to hash out whatever's on the table and address, if the list was only for the 400,000, there's still work to be done on the million, so.
Right. Bobby, let me ask you this, and this might be a Penny question too. Should we break away and have a separate account? I mean, is it doing us a disservice? I mean, clearly it's doing the county a disservice of having kind of a central checking account.
Well, I know my opinion on that.
Penny? You want me just to talk and that way I can dig myself out of a hole?
My only concern, and I had thought of that, is the fact that the county has deeper pockets. The infusion of revenue coming in is more extensive. I think that if the schools were to break away and have their own checking account at that point, they would probably have to be taking out short-term loans to make payroll. And so it's kind of a, you know, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. What I have done, though, is tasked my staff, two of them, Brian and Julie, to work with Penny at the treasurer's office monthly to reconcile not only RDA and Edmonds, but to all do it together, and then to come back and look at the overall budget and the projections for where we're going to land at the end of the year. And I think that that will definitely help. I mean, Penny requests reconciliations, she is very diligent, and she works with the staff very well. But I think that we're just going to have to just tighten things up and having Julie and Brian being the ones that are responsible for this, and that way we can address issues promptly, whereas, you know, Penny has had some items hanging out there that, you know, we probably are going to wind up having to write off, just because we either don't have the documentation anymore, or, you know, the people that addressed it, you know, have moved on, and so we're trying to rectify- you know, have moved on. And so we're trying to rectify that. But yeah, I honestly think separating it would be great, but I don't think it would work.
So we as a board, I mean, we don't have the authority to, uh, to make changes at the school level, because they have an elected school board. That, that is their job. The only thing that we can do is say, we've appropriated the money that was budgeted and agreed, the same budget that they adopted. You're looking to fail on meeting that budget requirement, and we're not going to bail you out, so you need to fix it. Well, I'm, I'm 100% willing to help if they want our help, but in the past, they have not.
Mr. Chairman, with all the transition with the school board, is it time to reconvene the budget subcommittee of the, between the board, the two boards? Because I don't think that committee has met. I, I know you've had some other side, side conversations and so forth, but the committee itself has not met for a while, has it?
Right. It's just, it's just been, myself sat on that. I've met with Dr. Jones, with Duranda on a couple occasions, but there hasn't been a full committee meeting.
It's probably time to reconvene, in my opinion.
Well, if you're looking for a directive or guidance, you know, I could support that. At least the 24 or 25-26 deficit problem, you know, I'm not going to blame or, you know, find fault or whatever, because that's water under our bridge, so to speak, but let's hold them responsible. I mean, that's basic 101 to the taxpayers of this county. Be responsible.
A repayment schedule is going to be set up, so. It's going to take time. They can't pay that back.
I understand that. But they need to look at their budget, they need to scrub their budget, they need to, you know, and if they want my help to look at their budget line by line, I'll be more than happy to volunteer to do that, so. Because we've done that before. And again, they weren't listening, so I don't know what else to do. Just, they need to step up and be responsible for their budget. As for the 24-25, that's passed, done. I mean, I think we've already, as you said, it's gone out our bank account or whatever, so that's probably coming out of unassigned fund balance, so.
Preserves of drop.
Well, we met with, with Dr. Jones. I told him, I said, look, these, these past penalties, that's already been covered by the county. There, there's no more, there's no more juice to squeeze.
Right.
There's just not.
With everything else expected coming down, as we had talked about last month, you know, they've got to figure out how to fix, fix that. So, I don't, you know, I don't know if you want to meet in two weeks, you want to do a subcommittee get-together, whatever, but I think Bobby speaks loud and clear when she says, we need to address this yesterday. It's not even a now situation, folks. It's a yesterday situation, so.
Well, I wanted this to get on a work session, so we could have a little bit more discussion about it, but also to make the board aware, as, as, again, I think there's a lot of misinformation out in the public, so we need to be prepared to address that when somebody comes up to us. And I agree, you know, I, I'd like to say, let's try to set up a meeting within the next two weeks.
Do it.
I don't feel like it's, you don't need to set up a meeting until the school board knows what we're facing and what our position is.
And, and I don't know if that's been shared with the school board in totality or not, about, I just don't know.
There's no need for us to go in and say, this is what, what are y'all going to do if they don't know what the problem is? They might as well know what the problem is now, so they can have a plan when we meet together.
It'd be hard to believe that they don't know, but I, I should...
They don't have the time in the first place.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. But maybe the committee, maybe a subcommittee meeting first, to make sure, uh, that, you know, that this is conveyed amongst all the members, and then, and then the need may be then to have a full joint board meeting. I, I think we're pretty adamant, if they're watching us right now, I think they, I think they can see it.
They have to come to a meeting with a plan. Even if it's one that Bobby's suggesting, the 200, pardon me, $200,000 every, what, a year is what they come up with? Good Lord, it'd take us 10 years to get that back.
So is, is it the directive then, gentlemen, to maybe have our county administrator reach out to the superintendent and let him know that our board wants to have a meeting with your board, and when we have that meeting, we want solutions to this problem?
Right.
And we want to do it.
He said.
Two weeks?
Quickly as possible.
I think we give it time certain.
Yes.
So I'd say two weeks.
And in the meantime, do you want a school budget subcommittee meeting in between to bridge, or just the, I mean, I think it would be helpful...
If there's a value of that, I mean...
I think that's a good idea.
It, it, I mean, we could at least set the stage in a, in a committee and then have a joint meeting after that.
I mean, the school board has to know what we're facing. If they don't...
I don't doubt that they do, but I do think it would be beneficial to have the school budget subcommittee meeting to really implore them and lead them to help come up with these recommendations at the joint meeting.
Yeah, but do they know they've already stuck 1.4 million dollars into our account to take care of their problems, and we're going to face another 1.4 million?
I know they know about the current deficit. I can't speak to the, the one in the past.
I think they do know about that.
They've been paying bills with your money, so I don't know. Yeah. Those folks don't work at the school anymore to ask.
Well, that's true.
Yeah.
Probably a good thing.
Bobby, just circling back a little bit, were the numbers that you were giving us, did they include the school construction fund money?
Uh, no, they do not.
Okay.
Do you know offhand how much money is in the capital improvement account?
Um, whatever was budgeted this year by...
Yeah, we can go back and look. I didn't know what you had, and we're tough to get at.
Yeah, and the, um, the school has that reserve, remember the, you know, 50% swept?
Right.
I think there's still about 47,000 in that, which probably should be offered up as well.
They're about to zap all that.
Yeah.
I agree.
And did they have any ESER money left?
No, they do not.
Because I thought there was a 1.2 million carryover.
That was a school construction grant fund that we could never get. An idea of what was, was doing, so we allocated that toward the joint vehicle maintenance facility, the chiller, and there was something else as part of that.
Broadband?
Broadband.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I think in the, I did a report for the state just recently, and I want to say that their ESER and COVID money amounted to like 4.7 million or something like that, and they, they spent it all, so.
And that's why I was saying, I think the grants got overlooked, because it was a lot easier to utilize the ESER funds for bonuses and salary increases and other purchases.
Some very hefty capital expenditures.
Yep.
Yeah.
Where grants are taking a lot of that. And then losing that grant money is what's really hurting us on the revenue side, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thanks, Bobby.
Thank you. Do we have a pick a date?
We'll have Gina reach out for availability for a forum on both sides, unless there's dates you want to let us know that you're not available to meet.
It's important enough, I'll, I'll make it available.
Make it happen.
Yeah. I would, too.
Anyway, we'll figure out something. All right. As far as where to meet and all that, to be honest with you, I want them on our turf. I'm sorry, you know, we've met in their library so many times. I want them here. I want to sit them right, I would prefer to sit them right there, personally.
We can do that.
I'll sit there and let them sit here. I don't care which.
No, you can have your seat, you've worn it one time.
No, it don't matter. And I, I just want to be on our turf somewhere in this building or somewhere else.
We can, we can just do that.
I'm sorry.
You don't have to be sorry, we can...
It's our turn.
All right, gentlemen, we're hearing nothing else. That was the last item on our work session. So we have about 40 minutes, we can take care of some closed session items. If somebody wants to read us into closed session?
I move that SS County Board of Supervisors convene a closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia, section 2.2, 3711A1, for discussion of the assignment and appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the board, and the performance of the county administrator, and pursuant to section, and pursuant to section 2.2, 3711A3, for discussion and/or consideration of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose, and the disposition of public held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board related to purchasing agreement, lease, and use agreements, a potential property acquisition, and public facilities.
Second.
Moved to properly seconded. Hold us a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're in closed session. Oh, thank you, sir.
Thought you might want to finish it.
Yeah. All right, can I get a motion to return back into open session?
Second.
Do a roll call, please, April?
Chairman Akers.
Present.
Vice Chairman Gill.
Present.
Supervisor Johnson.
Here.
Supervisor McGruder.
Here.
Supervisor Smith.
Present.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Get the compliance certification read.
Whereas SS County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed session on the state pursuant to an affirmation recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2, 3712 of the Court of Virginia requires a certification by the board that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, there, be it resolved that the board hereby certified that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement of the requirement of Virginia law were discussed in a closed session, to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened was heard, discussed, considered in the meeting by the board.
Any member who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of clauses one and two shall state the substance of the departure, that his judgment has taken place. Hearing none, certify the board.
Chairman Akers.
I certify.
Vice Chairman Gill.
I certify.
Supervisor Johnson.
I certify.
Supervisor McGruder.